I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting of October 6, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. I am Jack Farrell. I'll be sitting in for Jeremy Hooper, who is unable to attend today. We also have Mr. Roberts, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Shoemaker would not be with us today. However, we do have five members, so we do have a quorum and are able to conduct business. I will ask the members that are present to introduce themselves, starting on my left. So, Sonia? With your microphone on, please.
Julia Latham.
David Alzamora.
Please, Mr. Curio.
Thank you. I would remind everyone to please speak clearly and into the microphones as this is being recorded, and it will help a great deal. Today's meeting will be a little bit foreshortened. We will only, we will not do the complete agenda as it was publicized. We will not be getting into the discussion of the form-based codes at this time due to some complications as far as people having prior commitments. However, we do have a text amendment to consider, and we will get into that in a few minutes. My first order of business is approval of the minutes from our September meetings, and I'd like to address these separately. There are three sets of minutes, the first one being from September 1, 2022, the regular meeting minutes. I assume everyone has taken a chance to review those carefully because they are pretty extensive, and I'll entertain a motion at this time. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 1, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Seconded by...
Second.
Please, thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion?
Sorry.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. With regards to the September 6, 2022, special meeting minutes, I will, I assume everyone has also reviewed those carefully, so I would entertain a motion to approve or disapprove those as required.
I'll move to approve the September 6, 2022, special meeting minutes.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. There is a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved unanimously. With regard to the September 28 special meeting minutes, has everyone reviewed those carefully, I assume, and I'll entertain a motion on those.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what she said.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 28, 2022, special meeting minutes.
I wasn't here, so.
Seconded by Ms. McCurio. Any discussion on those? If not, take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion has carried unanimously. We also have with us today, of course, members of the planning and zoning staff. That would be Alex Cameron, Alfred Cassidy, and Sharon Constantineau is taking the notes. Since we have a public hearing to enter into, I will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting and enter the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to end this meeting and start the public hearing.
Thank you. A motion has been made to recess the regular meeting and enter the public hearing, and so the public hearing will now begin. We will have a presentation or discussion from the village planning and zoning staff regarding the proposed text amendment, and after that, we will entertain public input. There is a sign-up sheet in the back where people can sign up if they wish to comment on that, on the text amendment. After the public comments, then we will recess or adjourn the public hearing and entertain, and we'll discuss it and then go forward with approval, recommendation or not. So with that said, Mr. Cassidy, would you like to give us an update on the text amendment?
I will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the planning and zoning board. The purpose of the public hearing is to discuss text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance to address the primary or accessory use of land used for keeping, grazing, feeding, or breeding of livestock. The proposal would amend the following sessions. Sessions 8.5.1A, table of permitted and special uses and special requirements. Session 10.2, definitions. The public hearing and meeting structure, which the board enters public hearing. Introduction to the public hearing and staff presentation. Questions of staff by board members on processes and clarification of proposed amendments. Board receive comments on the proposed amendments. The board deliberation, which includes discussion and questions on the proposed amendments. Board action, continue the hearing, or formulate a recommendation to village council. The village of Pinehurst is proposing a test amendment to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance to address the keeping of livestock within the village zoning jurisdiction. Recently, planning staff has become aware of an opportunity to better address this topic than the PDO has historically and therefore be a better tool to administer. The intent of the test amendment is to make changes that provides greater specificity that the keeping of livestock will only be permitted in the R-210 zoning district. The R-210 residential definition is to establish as a district in which the principal uses of the land are for low-density residential and agricultural purposes. The approach would revise agricultural livestock definition, which is in session 10.2. Establish regulatory standards, special requirement RS25, which talks about farming and animal production. Add the agricultural livestock zoning land use definition on table 8.5.1A. Okay. Sorry about that. Session 10.2, definition. Revision to this session will slightly change the existing definition of agricultural livestock within the PDO and provide for regulated the use of land within table 8.5.1A. This is the current definition in the code. The use of land for keeping, grazing, feeding, or breeding of livestock, including cattle, hog, sheep, goats, and poultry, and also animal specialties such as rabbits and fish and fur-berry animals in captivity. And this is the revised definition that planning staff had came up with. Any use of land for keeping, grazing, feeding, or breeding of livestock, including cattle, hog, sheep, goats, and poultry, and also animal specialties such as rabbits and fish and fur-berry animals in captivity. Session 8.5, zoning table of permitted and special requirements. Revision to this session will add agricultural livestock as permitted by right with special requirements in the R-210 zoning district within the table 5 point, excuse me, 8.5.1A. Table 8.5.1, table of permitted and special uses and special requirements. Table 8.5.1A displays agricultural livestock permitted only in the R-210 zoning district, followed by special requirements. SR25, which talks about animal farming production, which is a principal use. And this is pretty much a map, area view map of Pinehurst, and R-210 is pretty much, is shown in orange. Zoning ordinance or development regulation may be adopted, amended, or repealed. The purpose of initiating changes or making adjustments may be necessary due to changed conditions, adopted plans, or public policy to advance the general welfare of the village, which is in section 1.2 of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. Amendments may be initiated by village council, planning and zoning board, anyone who owns property or resides in the jurisdiction, or their authorized agent. Prior to final action, the planning board should hold a duly advertised legislative public hearing and forward a recommendation to village council. This action is advisory only and not binding. Recommendations should be made within 30 days. If no recommendation to council is made within 30 days, council may take out the proposal without a recommendation, shall consider the adoption, comprehensive plan, and comment on whether the proposal is consistent with the plan. Village council action plans and public hearing. After a recommendation is made by planning and zoning board, or after 30-day window, a legislative public hearing may be scheduled by village council. After conducting the hearing, the council shall consider the recommendation of the planning and zoning board, citizen comments, and comprehensive plan while adopting a statement of whether the proposal is consistent with the plan. Zoning ordinance or development. After conducting the public hearing, the planning and zoning board had the following options. Continue the public hearing to gather more input or comment on the proposal. Recommend adoption of the proposed amendments as drafted. Recommend adoption of the proposed amendments with provisions to any of the sessions as presented. Session 8.5.1A, table permitted and special uses and special requirements. Agricultural livestock only allowed in the R-210 zoning district. Session 10.2, agricultural livestock definitions. Recommend rejection of the proposed amendments. At the end of the staff presentation to the proposed text amendments, and this concludes staff's report.
Questions or clarification needed from staff on this proposal? This would apply to only, this use would only be allowed in R-210, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
R-210 is primarily the ETJ area, I guess, to the western section of Pinehurst, but it also includes a large section of CCNC. They are zoned R-210, five-acre zoning. As long as we're clear on that.
Well, and I figure they probably have covenants and restrictions that are addressed.
Within their HMO.
Their homeowners association, well, probably.
Most likely covers that, yeah, so a little.
So all we're, it's literally all we're doing is deciding whether we want to add it to the table of uses just for further clarification.
Well, yeah, but adding it to the table of uses makes it clear that it is disallowed everywhere else.
Exactly, yeah, 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 but, yeah.
Can you clarify for me the primary use language?
Jules, what?
Am I remembering that there was something in?
Yes, so if, Alfred, could you go back to the slide that has the use table, please? I think it's, there you go, thank you. So, like, our use table is structured where like uses are assembled in certain areas. You may recall our latest public hearing for the text amendment was the lodging-type uses, so here's our agricultural uses. So the very top one you see there, farming slash animal production, that definition does reference the primary use. So this is that greater bit of clarity that staff mentioned in the staff report and why this amendment has been, we initiated it and moved it to this part and to ultimately be considered by village council, is that we have had the agricultural, comma, livestock use definition, but we didn't have it in our use table, which can better address whether or not it's any use, whether it's primary or accessory. So this typically, you know, you can have the primary use being a single-family So this typically, you know, you can have the primary use being a single-family residence, but you also may have as an accessory, just, you know, you're not necessarily a bona fide farm where you're making a living off of your farm.
I have a pet goat.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that was the intent, to provide greater clarity in our use table that, yes, you can as any use, primary or accessory, but there again, it would only be in the R-210 district. As Alfred did read, the general intent of use of that district is low, very low-density residential and also light agricultural uses.
Got it. Thank you.
And each of these other uses in the left side, they're under agriculture, are defined in the definition table in the PDO, is that correct?
Yes, as we learned in our last special meeting, we were going through a lot of this.
Any additional clarification or questions from staff? So at this time, I'd like to open the meeting to public comments. We did have a sign-up sheet. Shannon, did we have any, anyone, anyone who is present who wishes to comment regardless of whether they signed up or not? There being none, we can, further deliberations, or at this time, we could either, we could also close the public meeting and deliberate and form a recommendation later on. Why don't I, why don't we close the, entertain a motion to close the public hearing and resume the regular meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and resume our regular meeting.
Second?
Second. I second.
Seconded. The motion has been made to close the public hearing at this time and resume the regular meeting. Is there any question or discussion? If not, a vote on that? All those in favor saying aye.
Well, as far as discussion, I guess we're, what we're essentially doing here is, in the residential areas, with the exception of R-210, we're saying no backyard chickens. Am I correct?
As a primary use?
Yes.
Well, as, no, as any use.
Any use, is that?
Yes.
Clarify that?
You're correct.
Yep. Yeah, well, I'm just clarifying, because I know that there are people in Pinehurst who do have backyard chickens, so I just want to be clear that that's what we're doing.
And that use being in the use table now makes it clearer that it is a prohibited use.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're going to stop those now, or are they going to be allowed to be chicken docked?
Well, the action to be taken would be a matter of staff, and if there's essentially a complaint, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, it would just become our standard thing, where someone would have to make a complaint, and Angel would go over, and they'd be noticed, and they'd have 30 days to cure, and.
And determine whether it's a violation of the ordinance or not.
Whether they're actually chickens, I don't know.
Right, something to that effect, I suppose. Yes, right.
Okay.
Any further discussion before we're, okay, now it's time to formulate a council recommendation. As you know, we can approve, or we can approve with revisions, or we can recommend not to approve. So I would entertain a motion relative to the council recommendation.
I recommend that we adopt the changes to the PDO.
Have a second?
I, I'll second the motion that we approve the proposed amendments to sections 8.5 and 10.2.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the planning and zoning board recommended, we move, we have a motion to, that the planning and zoning board recommend to the Pinehurst Village Council that they approve the proposed amendments to section 8.5 and 10.2. It has been moved and seconded. I'll go with a verbal vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. So now, at this time, we really would prefer not to start into the section relative to the form-based codes. Yes, Alex? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We also need, as a part of this, we need to recommend or suggest as to whether or not this text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that being the case, I will entertain a motion relative to the comprehensive plan and this text amendment.
I move the planning and zoning board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as the proposed text amendments are consistent with the Village of Pinehurst 2019 Comprehensive Plan. Achieving goals in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan are considered reasonable and are in the best interests of the public.
We have a motion to recommend approval of this, and that it is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. I'll take a vote on this one, and a second, by the way. I'll take a vote on this, verbal vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Alex. So now, we were scheduled, at this time, the agenda suggested that we go into the development of the form-based codes relative to the village place. However, with the number of board members present and the complexity of this plan going forward, I think that may be, may not be the right thing to do. I think we best to think about how we can schedule a different meeting, a special meeting in the near future, and/or continue that at some further time. Alex, do you have any ideas as far as timing goes, as far as what we might consider? One thing I might recommend is that we poll all the board members and find out their availability for the next few weeks.
So the good thing with special meetings, you know, we have that 48-hour notice requirement. It sometimes can be a challenge for us, last minute, to secure the meeting space and make sure we got IT personnel available for those meetings, but we're afforded greater opportunity there. Instead of the typical public hearing windows, we have to do these notices. So, you know, we've done the, used the doodle poll. That seemed to be advantageous on staff's end, I hope it was for you guys. What staff can do is, over the next 10 days or so, we can select a couple of afternoon slots on a few days and start to see where the chips fall, and make sure we're keeping the chair and vice chair up to speed on, as things are starting to shake through. So the earlier that you guys, if we get that out to you, we can get that out as soon as tomorrow, the earlier that you guys could check which dates and time slots work better for you, then we can move accordingly from there.
So Alex, what were you thinking? Maybe a couple more meetings in October before the regular meeting in November?
I mean, October's, you know, we got 31 days, so I think it's reasonable to get another couple of meetings. It might be better to, you know, if we give one more meeting in October, I feel pretty confident that within two, we can wrap up this latest round that we're kind of going through and hashing through the table of uses with the, in respect to the blocks and the small area plan.
All right, well, then we look forward to staff sending out that poll, because, I mean, just getting the five of us is one thing, but it's more important to have information from all nine, probably.
And what staff can do, we can, we can select dates throughout the range of the following month, and then if there's two dates offhand that we're able to secure, so hopefully everyone has a pretty good handle on what the rest of their October will hold. Most likely, it will be, you know, not conflicting with the fourth Thursday of the month or any of the Tuesday afternoons where we have the council meeting set.
But we don't have to meet in this room, either. I mean, there's a couple of conference rooms. Well, there's at least one conference room that's more than, more than adequate for us to meet, that's the first conference room, is that correct?
That's right. So I think, at a minimum, those are the only two spaces, probably, that we would be able to meet, but also potentially be able to do the recording and live stream we do, but this meeting is obviously the preferred space, not only just because of the room, but because of the IT setup.
Okay, so we'll look forward to you developing that poll and see when we can get together, when's the next available date?
And then we'll be able to publish the hearing and the agenda accordingly, too, which will be the same material that you guys were given for the September 15 meeting.
Okay. Okay, so I guess that, not knowing exactly when those special meetings will occur, our next regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, November 3, 4:00 p.m. That being the case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The meeting is adjourned at 4:28.